Good evening, everyone. I'm so excited, so, so excited that so many of you are here for item eight dash one, our third quarter budget update. So again, welcome Vice Mayor and council members and members of the public. I call this regular meeting of the Albany City Council for June 3rd, 2024 to order. And I'll ask Councilmember Hanson Romero if she'd be willing to read the land acknowledgement statement. I can read it?
The City of Albany recognizes that we occupy... Sorry. "City of Albany recognizes that we occupy the land originally protected by the Confederated Villages of Lejeune. We acknowledge the genocide that took place on these lands and must make strides to repay the moral debt that is owed to this indigenous people, specifically the Aloney tribe. We thank them for their contributions which have transformed our community and will continue to bring forth growth and unity. The City of Albany commits to sustaining ongoing relationships with the tribe and together build a better future for all that now make this their home."
Thank you, Councilmember. City Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Here.
Councilmember Jordan?
Here.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Here.
And Mayor Mckee?
Here. We, let's see, moving on, we had no closed sessions today, so we'll move on to ceremonial matters. In this, in this and all comments and questions during the meeting, please address the council and no other attendees and respect each other, sorry, each person that has spoken. For those in the audience not speaking, we ask that you refrain from voicing your support or dissent. The council wants everyone to feel comfortable speaking and not be intimidated by others' comments or reactions. Item four one, Councilmember Tiedemann, proclamation for LGBTQIA+ month.
A proclamation of the City of Albany in recognition of LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, June 2024. Whereas the City of Albany prides itself on being a community that celebrates diversity and strives towards inclusion, and whereas the Albany City Council has affirmed that the council welcomes and values all our diverse community members regardless of where they are from, who they love, how they worship, how they look, their gender identity, their abilities, their economic status, or how they vote, and whereas the Albany City Council invites the entire Albany community to join together in creating a safe and welcoming city, one in which we celebrate our differences and learn from each other, and whereas the City of Albany has a diverse lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, intersex, asexual, and more community, and is committed to supporting visibility, dignity, and equity for all people in the community, and whereas June has become a symbolic month in which the LGBTQIA+ community and supporters come together in various celebrations of pride, and whereas Albany is joining other cities across the United States to recognize and celebrate June as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month, and whereas the City of Albany would like to acknowledge and recognize Albany's pride, an LGBTQIA+ advocacy group for Albany Unified School District for their ongoing work to ensure a positive environment for LGBTQIA+ students and parents, now therefore be it proclaimed that the City of Albany does hereby recognize the month of June 2024 as LGBTQIA+ Pride Month in the City of Albany, and the progress pride flag shall be flown from June 1st to June 30th at Albany City Hall, the Albany Community Center, and the torch located at Solano Avenue and Key Route Boulevard. I believe we have Becky Neiman Cobb from Albany Pride to accept this.
It was my family. So much to families like ours.
City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Go ahead, Catherine?
Yes, I, I just wanted to add that there are so many actions by state and local governments to make people in our community, the LGBTQIA+ community, feel as though we do not belong, particularly our young people. Thank you for this resolution to show support for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other online comments? Any members of the public in the room that would like to speak? I'm not seeing any. I'll open up for any council comments.
I'll just say thank you for choosing Albany community.
Thank you. Let's see, we'll move on to item four dash two, proclamation and certificate of recognition, Albany Middle School Girls Soccer Team, Vice Mayor Lopez.
In recognition of the Albany Middle School Girls Soccer 2024 season, whereas the Albany Middle School Girls Soccer Team made history as the first ever Albany Middle School Girls Soccer Team to represent our community, and whereas the girls' soccer program was given an opportunity to develop in the spring of 2024 as a recognized and supported athletic team of Albany Unified School District, and whereas the Albany Middle School Girls Soccer Team not only had an inaugural historic season, but also represented the Albany community across the East Bay, and whereas the teammates of the girls' soccer team not only fielded a competitive roster, but also highlighted the value and impact of intentional inclusivity, community support, and patience, and whereas the individuals who helped facilitate the emergence of a team to represent Albany Middle School include but are not limited to Albany Middle School Principal Eric Maitz, Albany Unified School District Athletic Director Bill Trussler, Coach Anissa Andrade, and many dedicated parents, and whereas the coaches and parents exemplify the commitment that our youth ought to be entitled to for their academic and social success, underscoring the impact of community investment towards academics and extracurricular activities, whereas it is fundamentally important that the young women who participate as student athletes be formally acknowledged for their sacrifices and bravery in showing up every week for practices and games, and whereas seldom are women student athletes afforded equitable levels of visibility and appreciation for their respective achievements and accolades. Now therefore, the City Council, the Albany City Council does hereby recognize the Albany Middle School Cobra Girls Soccer Team coaches, parents, and players for all their successes in representing the City of Albany with pride, resilience, integrity, and excitement. Coach Anissa Andrade? If you want, you could come speak over here, yeah, that way. And this is for you.
Thank you.
And then after you give your words, you can read out each player's statement.
Well, hi, everybody. I'm Anissa. I wanted to say thank you to everyone who came out to support the first ever all-girls' soccer team here in Albany. It was an honor to coach the team this season. I'm looking forward to returning next season and to continuing this legacy. Soccer has been one of my, one of my best teachers and friends while growing up. To be the coach to your daughters of something as special as soccer has been an honor. Thank you Albany School District for creating an all-girls team. It means so much to me, or to be respected in youth sports as young women. And thank you to all the players a part of the team. You all are awesome. Keep practicing for next season, get stronger, and keep smiling. And thank you to the parents as well. I'll start reading names. So first we have Avriel Adler. Marie Arnod. Erin Boyd. Oh, yeah, Mia. Actually, this is for Mia Boyd. Nora Soza Bush. Sha Yi Guan. Zoe Jennings. Anya Krotz. Aviana Leso. Valerie Lee. Yi Ting Liu. Leah Lo. Annika Maderas. Maya Martinez. Bryn Mitchelfelder. Parker Naga Fuji. Arden Pon. Simone Schafstein. Talia Silverman. Elena Spiegel. Elizabeth Uri Banya. Melanie Vega. And Evelyn Yu. Thank you. Congratulations Albany Girls Cobra.
City Clerk, any public comments? Not seeing any online. Are there any members of the public that'd like to make comments? Not, any council members that would like to make comments?
I just want to say, I never thought I'd be a soccer dad, but here I am. But no, seriously, I want to extend many congratulations to the young ladies who represented our community, especially when we have witnessed very recently the unfortunate remarks that professional male athletes have made towards women, speaking specifically to Harrison Buckner, who plays for the Kansas City Chief. And so you young ladies are a prime example of what it means to go after what you want unapologetically and not allow gender stereotypes to break you down, and I attribute much of that to your coach, Coach Anissa. In my brief interactions with you, I've learned that this was your first season teaching middle school soccer, and you took it with grace, but I also thought it was just really dope knowing that you were also a product of the school district and previously played soccer for Albany High School. So to see you make full circle was amazing. But I'll just close it out with, you know, again, saying, for many of you young folks here, you're gonna hear unfortunate remarks like that, like what you've heard from that professional athlete, and that did not define the trajectory or the path that you could pursue, and I hope this simple acknowledgement shows that and reminds you as you go out through life, if you want to pursue athletics in high school or the collegiate level, that to never let anyone dismiss or undermine the value and the integrity that you carry with you.
Not seeing any other comments. I'm wondering if, oh, please go ahead.
Is it okay if the young ladies take a picture with the council?
Yes, I was gonna offer for both proclamations, we can do pictures real quick.
All right, one, two, three.
Thank you, everyone. We'll move on to item five, City Manager Report. City Manager, may the council have your report.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to draw attention to our newest addition to our parks mentioned at previous meetings, but actually now opening as of this Wednesday for play are our pickleball courts at Ocean View Park. You see the, you see it in action as you go by the park. The blue fields are very, very attractive and inviting, and really looking forward to get this open and available for all of our community. We will be hosting a grand celebration on Tuesday, June 11th, from 3:30 to 4:30. All are welcome and hope to hear some presentations from both park recreation and open space members as well as members of the city council. So please save the date for that event. It's a momentous opportunity, knowing how much work went into creating these courts and the patience that the community has had as we've worked through all of the nuances with the funding and the design work. So they're finally here. We have just started annual sewer cleaning, which began today with our Public Works Department. This work is vital to prevent sewer system blockages and overflows and entails sewer cleaning and inspections over six miles of Albany's sewer this year. Please be aware that during cleaning operations, there may be temporary release of odors that subside once the work is completed, but sewer services will not be impacted. The work will take about a month, and follow posted signage for your safety around the area. There's a visual on our website of the areas that will be tested as well as displayed here. We have an American Red Cross blood drive tomorrow, June 4th. The good news is there's only five appointments left, so that's a great showing, so we need five more people. And this will be at the Community Center Tuesday, tomorrow, from 9:30 to 3:30. More details and schedule an appointment, visit redcrossblood.org and enter the sponsor code albanyca. It is now summer for our students, as of tomorrow at least for most of them, and the Friendship Club summer camps are starting next week. We still have limited space available, so if you are looking for summer camps, please check out all of the opportunities. There's a little bit of everything, and you can register online, albanyca.org/onlinereg. We have an information session for energy upgrades and EV charging for multifamily buildings. This will be held on June 11th at the Community Center from 7:00 to 8:00 PM. We have multifamily buildings invited to learn about opportunities for incentive funding and technical assistance to improve buildings in need of energy efficiency upgrades or new appliances. We'll have several representatives on site to help speak technical information and help facilitate what can seem to be a complicated project become a little easier. We're excited to invite San Francisco Opera to our community, and this is quickly forthcoming. June 27th, Albany will have a free outdoor mobile stage performance. This will be June 27th at 1:00 PM on Solano Avenue and Evelyn Avenue. Attendees are encouraged to purchase lunch at one of the local restaurants in the area and join the performance in the closed street intersection for a highly unique lunchtime experience. More information is on the San Francisco Opera website, Opera Out of the Box. You may see the signs up. I just saw them on my way into the meeting. Fourth of July in our park is our annual event, and will be coming very soon. 11 to 3:00 PM on July 4th at Memorial Park is, again, an event for the entire community, live music, food trucks, kids' activities, and free bike parking. So please join us for this event. And that completes my report. Thank you.
Thank you for your report. Let's see, if anyone attending would like to ask a question about or comment on the City Manager's report, please raise your hand in this room or raise your hand online. I'm not seeing any comments. Any comments or questions from council members? I'm not seeing any. We'll move on to go to the city. This is for attendees to provide the council comments, information, and questions on items that is not on the agenda. Please raise your hand now, either in the room or online. By state law, known as the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda except under extraordinary circumstances. Rather, items raised may be referred to a future agenda or to staff or comment. How many online?
Two.
So online and how many in the room?
Three.
Three. And we'll go into three minutes each.
I have Prem, then Charles, then Rachel. Go ahead and...
Hello. Hi. Thanks to the council for giving me an opportunity to speak. I just wanted to make, make the council aware that I'm a resident on Pierce Street, and a building across the street from us on 578 Cleveland Ave has erected a, a pretty, pretty large billboard signage on top of the structure, on top of the roof. So I think it's, you know, it looks like it's about 300 square feet. It's lit with spotlights throughout the night, so it's a pretty, it's a pretty big nuisance for us, and I just wanted to, I'm not aware that the city granted a permit for this sign, so I just wanted to, you know, inquire and make the, make sure the council is aware of this and how it's negatively impacting residents on Pierce Street, including myself, and wanted to make sure that something can be done about it. Yeah, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
FYI, I will be donating blood tomorrow morning at 9:30. This is right on the heels of that. Okay, my wife and I have lived at Pierce Street for 38 years. We're here to address the light pollution from Chef's Touch on Cleveland Avenue. We believe this business owner is violating city codes. We want the lights turned off until a resolution can be found. Our residential street represents 10% of Albany population. In, in the last decade, the city wanted to install a digital billboard on Pierce. Residents were, had convinced them otherwise. However, this current sign is illuminated like a digital billboard, and a second sign has been approved to go up as well. I don't know if you knew about that. Since we are one of the most populated streets in Alameda County, we believe the lighting is a nuisance and demands immediate attention. Our street has 870 condominiums with at least 50% facing the freeway. We believe the billboard lights will lower our condo values, and that loss of revenue will affect the city's tax base. We ask ultimately that the sign be taken down at the city work with the owner to install signs on the sides of the building, like the tire store, which are right next door to it, and also working with a lighting expert to pick the best lighting that does not impact residents of Pierce Street. We also ask that the city adopt what Caltrans codes have been for residential streets which mitigate light pollution. There is a giant exit, free Albany sign right across from this building. is a giant, uh, exit free Albany sign right across from this building and it's not illuminated. They just use reflective paint and not, Caltrans doesn't illuminate those signs. Um, we ask that the city adopt same codes for businesses over on Cleveland Avenue, um, facing residents. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello. Thank you for the time. My name's Rachel and I basically wrote that. You got the email, but I don't have the energy to read it. Uh, I first want to thank Preston for paying attention to our street over the years. I believe you were the ones who, were the one who basically redid all of the street and we've, we people on the street finally felt like we were part of the city. Up until then, it was kind of leftovers. Um, this is to me a really big problem. I know the city is trying to address zoning and lighting and becoming a green city. However, I don't feel this owner is in compliance with any of those desires. So we're asking the city to rethink why this was approved and to talk about, and we'll come back again, maybe we can be a part of the zoning planning commission to help rethink Cleveland Avenue in terms of how it impacts, uh, Pierce Street. Uh, we don't want this owner to go out of business. However, I'm disappointed that this business was initially approved because it's 24/7. So it's a big building. He has big windows and the lights beam out of his windows onto Pierce Street already. So this sign is just more damage to what we're already dealing with. Um, Jeff Bond did email me and Liniv tonight saying they're going to try to become, come into compliance, but I don't know what that means. If the sign stays up, I don't think it's going to make any difference. So we're asking you to really work with Ja-, um, work with him, tell us what we need to do to make this come down and be put on the sides of this building. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Catherine with the Albany Climate Action Coalition. Want to express my support and appreciation for climate action you've already worked on, like the emergency declaration, and would like to, um, request City Council prioritize climate action across city activities more realistically. Um, for example, in four areas. First, tree protection. Um, right now Albany does not have a native species or specimen or heritage tree protection ordinance similar to Palo Alto or San Francisco where native trees on private property can be cut down at the whim of the owner, even if they are healthy and providing shade and have to have benefits for the local wildlife. So something can do to protect habitat and improve the ability of resilience of neighborhoods in Albany as the heat waves are coming, like tomorrow is going to get hot. Secondly, want to accelerate the pace if possible for EV charging multifamily buildings because renters don't always have access to EV charging. That's a convenient spot for them. So would like to see more of this, uh, done. Thirdly, um, induction in the community center. Induction is one area of building electrification, which is a key part of climate action, being that buildings represent about a third of US greenhouse gas emissions and electrifying, uh, homes needs to also include getting people to start excited about cooking on induction, not just gas. So right now, the, the community center stove cooking classes, which are great classes, by the way, I've taken one of them, very fun, are on gas, which is not in alignment with the city's goals to advance climate action, um, or to be zero carbon in a couple of years. So getting those to be a pilot could be, um, have portable hobs first, then having, um, residential grade ones and commercial ones eventually could be a opportunity to align those goals. And then lastly, electric vehicles for city use. I'm still kind of annoyed that you guys approved $41,000 for a parking enforcement vehicle that was gas. There's no reason that could not have been electric. I'd like to see more city vehicles be electric vehicles in order to help support our climate goals, health of our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
This is Lucinda Young. I also am with the Albany Climate Action Coalition and I would like to support, uh, the previous speaker, Catherine Beers, and her, um, recommendations for, especially for a tree pre-, uh, uh, tree protection ordinance. Um, in addition, it's, uh, come to my attention that, um, our city does not have an enforcement mechanism for AB 1276 and AB 1884, those, that was a statute that passed and California statute that passed in 2012, or 2022, um, excuse me, um, that provides that single-use disposable accessories are only be provided by restaurants upon specific customer request. Um, the statute requires enforcement by either the county or city, and I did check with Stop Waste of Alameda County, who informed me there is no Alameda County-wide enforcement and enforcement is the responsibility of the city. I spoke with, um, Michelle Klaus, Klaus, who indicated she's not aware of who at the city, uh, is, is handling, uh, complaints. Um, so I request that this be addressed. Um, it would seem that ought to be enforced similar to SB 1383, the California recycling and composting mandate, and that enforcement is by complaint. And when there is a complaint, a letter goes out from the city to the restaurant that's in violation. Um, second, I expressed concern at last month's meeting about the council's authorization of a new gas parking enforcement vehicle. And since that meeting, I learned that the vehicle that we currently have is all, was only purchased in 2020. It's only four years old. I've actually looked at the vehicle. It looked, looks like it's in really good shape. I don't know if there's some mechanical issues. And I even, by coincidence, drove behind it for about three blocks today on San Pablo Avenue. It seems to work really well. Um, uh, I'm just wondering, is the useful life of these vehicles really only four years? Um, I recently read that the average age of the Oakland municipal vehicles in their fleet is 11 years. And I think especially given the deficit that we're hearing about with our city, I, I am just asking, do we really need a new parking enforcement vehicle? And if we do, um, I wanted, I think we can learn, uh, from what other cities have done and other cities are purchasing electric parking enforcement vehicles. Uh, just last week, I was visiting in Friday Harbor in Washington State. They had a parking, uh, electric parking enforcement vehicle and I spoke with the officer. It was purchased just a few months ago for $34,000. And I understand the city authorized the purchase of a gas vehicle for 42. That's a problem. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Greetings. This is Nick Peterson, also with Albany Climate Action Coalition. I just want to second, um, what the previous speaker, Lucinda Young, just said. Um, you know, now that we have the, uh, emergency declaration about climate change, I think it's really important that the city get more coordinated on what its actions are and, and really show true leadership to our citizens on, um, how to move forward rapidly in addressing issues of climate change. I mean, I've said before, one little vehicle isn't going to make a difference, but here we are buying the second one after only about four years and we still can't make that miniscule little change to a non-polluting vehicle. It just is a bad, bad image for the city of Albany and it's not what we should be doing. And we need to question these a bit more and get staff on board. Um, I did a Freedom of Information request to get all the correspondence from the police department and others with the vendor and I'm going to be calling the vendor and finding out, you know, what's really going on here. It, it really seems for a small city, we have an awful lot of just latest, greatest gas guzzling equipment going on. Um, and it doesn't seem all that necessary. The other day I was at the intersection of Gilman and, and, um, Curtis and there was a disturbed young woman throwing things into the street, um, screaming and yelling epithets and, and generally bothering everyone. And the Berkeley Police showed up on bicycles. You know, they didn't have to come screaming up in a big SUV, uh, vehicle that, you know, weighs six tons or whatever it is and, and uses a lot of gasoline and be very intimidating. They came up and they were very peaceful with how they interact with this person. So I'd like to see Albany be more in, in that character too. And I think most Albany citizens were. I don't see why we have to have our police going around in these rather suburban and, and not very, um, representative of our community vehicles as the number one thing that we see on the street. So really pushing that and thinking we can at least have a pilot project or something that will look into that, or at least have this vehicle that, uh, goes around and tickets cars in parking, uh, be something like that. But just to say, I, I mean, the comments to say that there were, there were, uh, significant mechanical issues is just not, not cutting it. And, uh, you know, Albany citizens, at least with Climate Action Coalition, don't believe that. So we need to do better. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Looking to city staff, are there any, uh, responses about the Pierce Street signage?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to those that raised our attention to this issue. I will share that staff reached out to the business owner in early May, uh, to work through the non-compliance. And I will state that is non-compliance. Those sign, the signs that are installed were not approved and we will continue to work on that, including issuing a, a notice of violation. So resolution to that should be forthcoming.
Thank you. Uh, and let's see, I don't believe any of the other comments were truly questions for staff. Uh, I did want to follow up. Does the Albany Police Force have a bicycle patrol or do we have bicycles as an option?
We do have a, a variety of transportation methods. I would look at the size of the agency and the response, uh, obligations with the capacity of the staff, uh, to level that a little bit more. And I'd be happy to follow up with additional information on our entire fleet.
Thank you, City Manager. Um, with that, we'll move on to, um, item seven, Consent Calendar. Um, items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. By approval of the consent calendar, the staff recommendations will be adopted unless otherwise modified by the city council. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member or a member of the audience requests removal of an item from the consent calendar. Uh, would any council members like to pull an item? Not seeing any council members. Uh, are there any members of the public that would like to pull an item? Not seeing any in the room, any online, not seeing any online either. Um, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Seconded.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Councilmember, uh, Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
And Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'm moving on to item eight, Presentations. Eight, one, Fiscal Year 2023-24, Third Quarter Budget Review. Uh, staff?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Rena Schwartz, your interim finance director, and I'm pleased to be here this evening to present a brief overview of the report that you have in your packet regarding our third quarter budget review. Um, overall, uh, based on the trends that we are seeing, um, I think we are in slightly better shape than when, uh, we last spoke. Um, it looks like our revenues will be slightly stronger than budget, uh, expenses slightly under budget, um, with a relatively minor, uh, projected potential deficit at 39,000. Um, I'll say now and I will say again at the end of the presentation, these are estimates. Estimates change. The world continues to change. And if I could get within 39,000 of actuals in a budget projection, I think I should be up for an award. So, um, please don't expect it to just be exactly 39,000. So just, um, wanted to make that a little bit, uh, clear on that item. Um, on the next slide, um, you can see that generally speaking, revenues are close to, um, what we anticipated in, uh, the budget. So, um, in a few categories, we do have some, uh, variances from what we anticipated, some up, some down. Um, so those are described in your, um, in your report. Probably, um, most importantly that we're seeing are, um, a couple of places where revenues are trending a little bit higher than we anticipated, um, including in the, um, current service charges area and in, uh, something called other revenue. Other revenue is a lovely catch-all phrase, but, uh, in this case, it's primarily the fact that the memorandum of understanding with UC Berkeley was adopted essentially the same day that the budget was adopted. And so we couldn't include that revenue in the budget, but we have received it. We will be amending, uh, or recommending to you on the June 17th meeting that we amend the budget to incorporate that for FY '25. Um, but it does make, um, our, uh, actuals compared to budget for FY '24, uh, look a little bit better because we didn't anticipate that revenue coming in, but it has come in, which is, um, which is great for us. Um, we're also seeing slightly stronger than anticipated, uh, UUT growth, um, particularly associated with, uh, areas where the changes were made with the ballot measure. So, um, that is something that we will continue to, um, look at and, uh, the council will have the option to discuss whether there are specific revenues associated with those changes that, um, should be set aside for, um, sustainability functions or whether that's going to just continue to be part of our overall general fund as we look at the health of our general fund budget in total. So, um, moving on to, oh, transfers, everybody's favorite topic, transfers. Um, as a reminder, transfers in are places where the revenue that we receive for certain things is recorded in a special fund. It's not recorded in our big general fund. And in order to pay costs that we pay out of the general fund, we transfer those revenues in. So it's a little bit like knowing you're going to pay for something out of your checking account, but you've got the money set aside in savings or the, you know, you put aside some of your paycheck into savings. Do you have anybody remember Santa saver accounts, right? Like where a little bit went into your Santa saver and you could get it back in like December to, and it's a little bit like that. So, um, the, uh, it used to be that we did those transfers from our special revenue funds once a year and it, it made the, that line item or those line items in the budget a little awkward to discuss throughout the course of the year. And so we have now changed that and we are updating those on a quarterly basis. And so what you'll see both in this report and going forward is that we have caught up and we are looking at doing those on a quarterly basis. So we have a much better sense of, are we on track? Are we not on track? Um, two other, well, one other thing about the, the transfers is many of those transfers are associated with particular costs for certain kinds of projects or certain types of work. What that means is we don't know until the very end of the year whether we've actually had all the expenses that we're transferring that money in for. So whether it's gas tax or some of our other special funds. So we will do our best assessment of it each quarter and then we will true it up at year end. So sometimes we don't complete as much, uh, transfer revenue coming in as we budget because we also didn't have the expenditures. So it's not just that we're like, well, how come that we didn't transfer the money? And we think these are going to be the expenditures. These are the revenues to pay for them. And if we don't complete the projects or the projects cost less, then we don't end up transferring the revenue in that year. So they do balance each other out to some degree. But that's a, um, a mechanism to look at, um, how we handle the transfers. And so that's something that, um, I think will be a better, um, a better picture of where we are financially as we're looking at those transfers. Um, on the expenditure side, um, we do anticipate that, um, expenditures will end up below budget. Um, that is not unusual. Um, we do have, as positions turn over, we have salary savings. The bulk of our budget is in the labor costs. And so when we have changeover in positions or we have vacancies, that does contribute to salary savings over the, the course of the year. Um, that's, uh, both good and bad. It's good from a pure financial perspective. It's not necessarily good from a service perspective. The departments typically have been doing a very good job at trying to manage the expenses and continue to provide the services, but that's the tension that exists anytime we're talking about, um, vacancies. So, um, we do, we do see that those savings are likely to, to be here this year as they have been in past years. Um, one of the other main things, and I meant to start with this, um, as kind of a highlight, but I'll end with it. So it'll be the last thing in everybody's mind and- thing in everybody's mind, and will be a bit of a celebration. So one of the things we've also done with this third quarter report, and we will do for the second half of each year going forward, is not only looked at actuals, but do a projection of where we think we're going to end the year. That gives you sort of the most complete assessment of where we think we're going to be as the year gets closer and closer to the end. We probably won't ever do it in the first quarter, because that's just a complete guess, quite frankly. Like, yeah, we think we're going to be right on track. We don't really know that, but we we think so. We hope so. So once you hit mid-year and beyond, we can do an estimate of where we think we're going to end the year, and that gives you a picture that is similar in scope to the budget that gets adopted. And so it gives you a good tracking point across the the course of the year. So in summary, we are, the departments are doing a good job at managing their budgets. We always really appreciate that, and that will continue to be important as we go forward. Revenue is slightly higher than we anticipated, which is great. We did anticipate that this year, in the budget that was adopted, we might have a deficit of up to 1.3 million. It does look like that will be substantially less. But again, that's an estimate, and we will continue to watch that closely through the end of the fiscal year. And when we come forward with the fourth quarter report slash year-end report, we'll we'll obviously have a better picture of of exactly how that has played out relative to the estimates that were made. You know, we do know in making the estimates that we can look at historical spending patterns. We can look at where departments have maybe projects that have or have not been completed. But we still, you'd be surprised, things can certainly change over the course of three months. So stay tuned for where we'll end up the year. But overall, a pretty a pretty good picture for where we are, three quarters of the way through the year, and looking forward to hitting year end and heading into FY '25. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Looking to council members for any questions. I had one question just about the other revenues category, the catchall. Given that, you know, I think the memo said something about $400,000 came from UC Berkeley, that put us well above what we expected. Is it normal that, had we not gotten the UC numbers, that our other revenue sources would have been that far off the projection, I guess, is what I'm trying to understand? Because I'm not sure exactly how much over we were, but, you know, if you take $400,000 out, just looking at the bar graph, it's like we were under significant. So I don't know if that's normal, that like the other revenues, it's kind of this catchall of random things, or is it?
It is a catchall of random things. It does not typically, I mean, a $400,000 swing in that other revenue category is significant. That is a major change relative to budget. I can't remember exactly what the the base budget is in other revenue, but $400,000 is a multiple of that, what is normally there. So normally, we would not expect to see that kind of variation, except that we can pinpoint it to that one specific agreement.
And and what I meant more was, if you took the $400,000 out, it looked like we might be 100 or 200,000 short otherwise. And I was a little bit, is that normal, or is that just, I couldn't, I was looking off the graph, so I don't know that that's the exact, that we are off.
I will, I will look at that, and, because I don't realize, I realize I don't have this super detailed spreadsheet with me. But we can provide the information about where we are, where the base is for other revenue, and where we would be absent the 400,000. But that is a bit of a catchall, so it can vary substantially from year to year.
I'm not seeing any other questions. Are there any members of the public in the room that would like to speak on this item? Not seeing anyone in the room, anyone online?
Hello, this is Elaine Stelton. I just wanted to get a little bit more information, if possible, about what that $400,000 was for from UC Berkeley. Does it have to do with all those additional units going in? Or what exactly is that agreement? Would you kindly explain? Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other, that's the only comment? Oh, sorry, there's another comment. That's it. Staff?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Happy to answer the question. It is a MOU between the city and UC for a 10-year term for services that correlate to both UC Village residents, as well as the community at large. It does help cover some costs of existing services provided to UC Village, including public safety, primarily in medical response. But it is also intended for a general-purpose community benefit. $200,000 of each year is, as noted in the MOU, goes into a special fund for purchase of equipment for the fire department eventually, but that has not been expended as of yet.
Thank you. Let's see, any?
I could just clarify, it's $200,000 on top of the 400,000.
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Any council comment?
I will comment. Yeah. Thanks, staff, for bringing the transfers into quarterly. Much appreciate that work being done. Makes it a lot simpler to interpret what's going on. So really, really appreciate that, and answering my questions outside of the meeting as well. Thank you.
I also want to thank staff. I truly appreciate bringing, making the our budget process and our estimates more easier for all of us to understand. Those of us who are learning more, and those of the members of the public who might be hearing about our budget for the first time. So I truly appreciate that. I think that's a really great thing for us as a city, and as particularly knowing that our long-term projected deficits could potentially be larger every year. And so while we have been very fortunate over the last few years to not have an actualized deficit, and if we're really lucky, we won't have one this year, or we'll have a small one. But knowing that every year, it will grow, it's potentially going to grow, more clarity every quarter, understanding where we stand is very helpful. So thank you so much. With that, we'll move on to item 10, 10-1, Unfinished Business Charter Amendment Regarding Delegating Appointment Authority of City Officers and Department Heads from the City Council to the City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. What is before you is a resolution 2024-43 that we're requesting for you to consider tonight. And what it does is, it delegates appointment authority for city officers and department heads from the city council to the city manager. That's for all positions except the city attorney's position. That position will still be delegate, will still be appointed by the council. In addition, it delegates authority for organizing the city to the city manager. Resolution includes the ballot language that's proposed, as well as all the amendments to Chapter Three of the charter. So as I mentioned, those those revisions are, again, to have the delegating authority go to the, from the council to the city manager for all the official positions, except the city attorney. The revisions are in red line with strikeouts and bold underlines for those revisions that are new. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Looking, do any council members have questions? Not seeing any council questions. Are there any public comments? Not seeing any public comments, any council discussion?
I'll move the item.
I will second the resolution. With thanks to staff for preparing.
Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Councilmember Hanson Romero?
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, New Business, 11-1, Ban on Sales of Tobacco Products and/or Electronic, sorry, the, cut off there, Electronic Cigarettes. I brought this forward. Apologies, I don't have a memo attached to it, but this is building off of kind of the work and research that students have done in terms of tobacco use, particularly in youth, and the Alameda Counties survey two years ago, and then the school districts and the students work in doing surveys within the school district. I'm asking that we form a subcommittee to explore options. In my initial research in preparing to meet with the students, found out that there are two communities in California that have banned the sale of tobacco. So that is Beverly Hills and Manhattan Beach. And there is one community in Brookline, Massachusetts, which has banned the sale of tobacco to anyone born after the year 1999. And so that that ban was considered more of a phase-out ban. The intent here is not necessarily that we'll be coming back with a ban, but that we form a subcommittee that can discuss options and look into potential ways of reducing both youth smoking, but generally tobacco sales in Albany. And my hope this summer is to work with some of the students who will be around this summer, and with Alameda County Health in exploring both the research on what other communities have done, and talking with other communities, and then potentially bringing something back. And so I'm open to...
I'd be happy to be on that.
Okay. So I was gonna open it up for questions first.
Sorry, jumping the gun.
Any questions?
This might be ahead of the game, since it might be some of the ad hoc committee does. But as you mentioned, having done research, so what does the research show as the pros and cons of prohibition?
All right. So the research I did was to see if anyone had actually adopted it.
Okay.
And then by which mechanism. And so Manhattan Beach, I was able to read much of the language that they went through. And they they outright banned the sale of tobacco products. However, they did have an exemption process by which businesses that had invested, they could show that they had invested in advertisement materials, whatever it was, that there would be an exemption period for those, so that they would phase out as well. And again, like I said, in Brookline, it was more of a, just a, an enforcement issue of you can't sell to anyone who was born after 1999. They happened to pass it in 2021, so it is, or 2020, which was, which essentially meant that people they hadn't been selling to, they couldn't sell to, because they would, they wouldn't come to age. We're a little behind that, but it is an option. In terms of what each community saw in terms of pros and cons, that is part of the, what I would like the ad hoc committee to be able to do, and particularly reach out to these three cities, because they seem to be the most prominent in terms of being able to find information. So. Not seeing any other questions. We'll open up for public comment.
Good evening. My name is Paul Cummings, and I am an Albany resident. But I am, and I'm definitely excited about this issue, and that the city would consider this discussion. I am speaking today, though, as a representative for Alameda County Public Health Department, the Tobacco Control Program. And, you know, if the city does create an ad hoc committee, our program will will try to provide whatever technical assistance we can, whether that's connecting with other cities, gathering additional data within our city, really trying to support getting information, and so that the city and the council can make a clear and thoughtful decision on on this. So thank you for for sort of engaging in this discussion. It's really exciting.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor Mickey, Vice Mayor Lopez, and council members. My name is Alyssa Pena Perez. I apologize for not being able to make it in person. I'm currently studying for finals. It is finals week. Almost done, though. One more day. I'm an Albany High School peer educator. I work with TOPE, which is Tobacco Usage Prevention Education. While Albany has shown tremendous leadership in the past, limiting flavored tobacco, which has targeted kids in the community, I believe the next step in the right direction is ending the tobacco epidemic altogether. While ending tobacco sales in Albany may not eliminate all access to tobacco products by youth in the city, this will at least make it more difficult, because tobacco would no longer be sold in close proximity to where youth live, especially because since Albany is a small community, there is a very close range to elementary schools, middle schools, and the high school that I myself attend. Places where they're frequent, you know. There are a variety of ways that tobacco gets in the hands of youth, but that shouldn't stop the city from doing what it can to limit local access. Albany city leaders, in my opinion, and I believe, can reclaim Albany's place as a frontrunner in the fight against big tobacco by ending the sale of all commercial tobacco products citywide. And I really, I believe this topic is really important, because it not only affects past generations, my generation, but the future generation. I would ask if you guys could please act now to form a subcommittee to explore options for making Albany a tobacco-free city, and to save our generation, and, like I said, generations to come from tobacco addiction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hello, council members, mayors, vice mayor. There's three of us here. My name is Faruza Sabir. I'm also a TOPE representative at the high school.
Hello, everyone. My name is Milan Michael. I'm also a Tobacco Use Prevention Education representative.
Hello, my name is Delina Kosa. I also attend Albany High School, and I'm a, I'm a peer educator.
So back to me, Faruza. So I've been a peer educator for, I think, almost five or six years now. And, you know, every year, I do my slide shows to the, to the students, just telling them that this tobacco is obviously bad for you, and that you shouldn't do it. But I feel like having this, like, ban on the tobacco sales, or like, selling tobacco in Albany will be like a way bigger step. Because even though you're telling the students that they shouldn't smoke in the first place, they're still, like, obviously going to see it, and probably just be like, oh, let me try it. Just one puff, one, one puff won't hurt, like, I won't get addicted. I'm just trying it. But if you don't have, like, the stores around them influencing them, and just having it there for them to see it and buy it, then that would help our cause, like, a lot, lot more. And we'd see less of our student body being addicted to these addictive drugs.
Hello, it's Milan. Similar to what Faruza was saying, I, although we do educate students on the harms of smoking tobacco, or ingesting it, period, I believe that, you know, stopping all sales of tobacco in Albany is really the step forward that we need to take to stop, or just, you know, slow down the addiction rates within our community, especially with our youth. Because being a student going to Albany, I'm telling you myself, it's, it's scary that, you know, that all these stu, that, like, that the addiction rates are this high. It doesn't, it doesn't make any sense. But when, when you ask the students how they're getting it, what's making it so accessible, you know, they're getting it within their community. And I really believe, truly believe, that stopping the sales of tobacco can definitely help a lot of these students with addiction, and further on, further generations with addiction. So, yeah, thank you so much.
Hello, it's Delina. I would have been here in person today, but I have finals to study for, but I'm still here regardless, because I, what I have to say is important. Young people who experience poor mental health have been sold a lie that using tobacco products is an effective way to manage symptoms. The temptation of tobacco is just too strong, and the temporary feeling of relief and escaping from your problems makes addicts stay addicts. Personally, I have seen how tobacco has affected my peers at school, seeing how mentally drained they look, how they have changed physically, and how much they depend on it to get through their day. By taking down shops that sell tobacco, it's a huge first step to stopping young teenagers from becoming addicted. We need your help, so please act now to form a subcommittee to explore options for making Albany a tobacco-free city. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
This is Lucinda Young, and I commend this plan to form a subcommittee to look at this issue. I know Albany holds itself out as a community that values health, that values our young people. I'm the mother of two young people, a 21-year-old and a 25-year-old. My 25-year-old is a tobacco addict. My 25-year-old is a tobacco addict. I see him struggling with trying to get off this stuff. And opponents will argue, well, even if Albany prohibits the sale of tobacco, they'll just go to the neighboring city to buy it, and why hurt our businesses? That will inevitably be the argument. However, we need to take the higher road, we need to set a precedent, as these other two cities have set, and really prioritize our health, especially the health of our young people, whose frontal lobes are not sufficiently developed to resist tobacco and resist the, the social pressure. And that needs to take a priority over big tobacco profits and even the profits of those who are selling tobacco. I really appreciate forming this subcommittee and would be very proud to say I lived in a city that had prohibited tobacco to protect our community health. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any other public comment. Any council discussion?
So I'm, I met with the group, gosh, was that two, two weeks ago, maybe? Yeah. So, you know, I'm, I, I love the passion that they had for this and everything, and so I like the fact that you brought it to attention, that we could talk about it. I would like to be part of the ad hoc committee so that we could take a look at what the possibilities or what the parameters could potentially be, but also where their pitfalls could be as well.
I'm somewhat on the fence because our society's tried prohibition several times. We're finally ending one, one prohibition on one substance. And I don't think it's been a huge success. Obviously, it makes sense for something that is immediately deadly. So given that history, I, I'm not particularly inclined, but I'm willing to see where the ad hoc committee goes. In some sense, because Albany's so small, it could be a sort of a free rider problem in that, sure, we can do it, you know, and we'll, we'll feel so good about ourselves. But if every city did it, I think it's pretty clear what would happen. You'd start to have a off-book market, as we do for other substances, and I don't think that would be a positive development. So I would ask, if, well, if I'm gonna support the committee, I would ask that it looks at what, what's going on with enforcement as well. I mean, these, these retail establishments are licensed, they have a permit. And so if people who are not of the adequate age or legal age to be buying these products are buying these products, then that's a problem that needs to be addressed, rather than shutting it down altogether for everybody at the risk of what could happen. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Vice Mayor?
I'll just state, yes, an agreement as well. I'd be really interested to see where ad hoc committee could take this. I wish I could volunteer myself, but I'm presently at bandwidth at this moment. Typically, I love getting involved with anything where the youth are involved and championing what ideas that they have to bring forward. I'm also somewhat in agreement with Councilmember Jordan as well, that, in the sense of, I, I do hope that the ad hoc committee takes into consideration the impact it does have on the handful of small venues that will be impacted. I know, you know, we see it as a vice, and a vice that is quite harmful. But I also try to look at everything from an equity lens and, you know, what message are we sending if we're, if it, optics-wise, it looks like we're just going after a handful of venues in our small, little city. But I would hope an ad hoc committee that's formed works very diligently, both with the youth and with some of our local business owners to, in some form or compromise. I do applaud what was done in the East Coast. I think there is some very good middle ground there, but I don't know what the data or what the research looks like or what it's shown. And so, again, I hope the ad hoc committee can really come forward with something with that. And I do know, when this first started coming up as a topic, and I did my own research on what went down in Southern California, I've seen some weird exceptions were made for hotel venues and for cigar shops. And so that makes me question, to whom did that ban benefit? You know, what's, I'm not trying to make any accusations, but that does rub me the wrong way a bit to see that specific entities and venues were allowed to still have a pass there. Well, I would hope that if we were to do something here in Albany, that the ad hoc committee, again, would work very closely with our, with our broader community, not just the businesses, not just our high school students who have been championing this, but as you've heard from folks in public comment, who also rightfully have concerns about these vices. How can we, as elected leaders and folks and just ordinary people in the community, advocate for a more healthier, sustainable community? And what did that look like if we're taking on potentially low-hanging fruit like this?
I'll share one, one story. I try to avoid getting to storytelling, but I shared this with the students, and I, I think I just want to be really upfront with this. I did not, I was not a smoker in high school when I went to college. I started smoking when I was probably 18 and a half, and until about when I was 20, I was a smoker, not a heavy smoker. Maybe a pack in a week or 10 days, so definitely not a heavy smoker. It's definitely kind of something that architecture students did, because we'd be up until 3:00 in the morning and be stressed. And I'm very thankful for those around me who supported me in stopping my smoking, both those who I had been smoking with, but others who just made me recognize what a bad decision that was. I will tell you that I walk down the street and sometimes I will smell a cigarette and want to ask for a cigarette from a person. And I am not 20, anywhere near 20 anymore. But I say that because I, I think I recognize that many of the points that were brought up, we don't live in a vacuum. One of the things the students brought up is the ease with which you can actually buy tobacco products online, which I did not even realize you could do. And so, you know, in all efforts, working with the students and doing our research, I do want us to understand that balance of how much of what we're doing is just a statement and how much of it can be truly impactful. And so that is my hope for forming an ad hoc committee. I'm excited that Councilmember Hanson Romero is interested in joining that ad hoc committee because I would really love to understand both her perspective, but also the perspective of a lot of the local businesses. And so with that, I'd make a motion that a subcommittee's formed with myself and Councilmember Hanson Romero.
Seconded.
Yes.
Councilmember Jordan?
Yes.
Councilmember Tiedemann?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lopez?
Yep.
And Mayor Mickey?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, everyone. With that, we'll move on to item 12, council subcommittee reports. Oh my, now I have to think about how far back we go, but perhaps we just keep it to the most recent meetings. We have not done this in quite a few meetings, so. And I will look, see if anyone's trying to dodge me right now. Councilmember Tiedemann, if we could start at your end.
Thank you. There are a lot, but I will try and keep it to the most recent. We had a special meeting, a retreat for ABA Community Energy on, to cover our power procurement, which covered sort of the details of how that's done, for anyone interested in how our power is provided and how it's purchased. It's an incredibly complicated and technical process, but it was laid out pretty well there, and it is relevant to all of our climate goals and how we actually get power. There was an ABAG executive meeting last month. We talked about some priority conservation areas and some suggestions around how RENA numbers will be determined for the next cycle of housing elements. I know that we, you know, are just at the start of this cycle, but the terminations for the next cycle will be coming up before we know it. So there is some efforts there, especially around adding two new lowest income, acutely low and extremely low income categories there to account for homelessness directly. And there will be lots more updates as that keeps going. There was a, also on ABAG, I haven't, this will, I think, be the last one of, there's been several meetings of various committees, but I think the most important one is we had the ABAG executive meeting where we put forward the bond to be put on the ballot. That is the first of several votes it has to go through. It went through the, some of the others. It is now going to be voted on by the BAHA board this month, so, and that was recommended by everybody to be $20 billion, so go for the maximum amount possible. And I suspect it will be put on the ballot this month, but I will have more updates about that soon.
Thank you, Councilmember Tiedemann. Vice Mayor?
I know it's been a while since we've had updates. I'll just try to keep it brief as possible. I can say we do have another mosquito abatement district meeting coming up next Wednesday. I just know the community is excited to know what's going on. Folks want to know, please tap into our meetings. Trust me, they're actually quite more, more interesting than one would assume. It's not just folks sitting around the table talking about how we need to kill mosquitoes. But I will say there was a recent MOU, a recent agreement set with jurisdiction out in Hayward where ACTMAD now has representation on this entity. The name is not coming to the top of my head right now, but East Bay Regional Park District is also one of the representatives on this entity for marshaling around Hayward. And the reason I'm bringing this up is because this is the prime location in trying to understand mosquito abatement issues. And so this is a major step forward, and our mosquito abatement district getting intentionally involved with other jurisdictions to make critical effort to curb any potentiality of mosquito cases in, in humans around our region. I can also share that a couple months back, I think it's a couple months back now, we haven't been able to do these report backs for a hot minute, but I was able to attend the UC Berkeley Chancellor's Breakfast, which was quite an enjoyable event. It was an opportunity to definitely hear directly from the UC on effort that they're making with the community that they're most directly involved with, Albany, Berkeley, Oakland, City of Richmond. So it's a really great way to see, to have fellow local elected come together as well, our representatives for those elected, to more or less brainstorm on ideas on how we could work with the UC. I, I know that's weird coming from me, because I always got testy words to say for the UC, but that event itself was very encouraging, and to my knowledge, was the first one in several years that we've had. When I say we, neighboring cities, community partners, and UC Berkeley. So it was, it more or less felt like a big reunion for a lot of folks in attendance, so I would assume the last folks on this council that probably had that type of engagement were probably Councilmember Jordan and Councilmember Tiedemann, maybe. But at any rate, I think it gives me a lot of hope as I'm finishing out my vice mayor year and looking forward to my mayor year in the next cycle, what partnership can be leveraged, particularly around our sports field, that we share some interesting relationship with UC that are, many of our youth need access to for recreational purposes. Though just knowing that that line of communication's open was very reassuring. I could also share, lastly, that I had recently participated in the Green, East Bay Green Home Tour, and we had a local resident actually open up their home right here in Albany. And so it's really cool to witness someone be able to brag about their heat pump and how it was made possible through rebate programs that our council in previous iterations have approved. And so I just want to share that out because I think sometimes we, as, when we're sitting here at the DICE making these approvals, we think for ourselves, yes, we're doing, we're doing good, we're opening up opportunities, but it's a whole different experience to see that level of excitement in people when they're sharing it with the broader community, broader East Bay community. And here, and seeing and witnessing other folks from different neighboring communities come and say, oh, wow, Albany's really setting the mark high for what our cities and what our jurisdictions should be doing. But yes, major kudos to our community member for opening the doors and really showing the best of what Albany has to offer in terms of energy efficiency upgrades and how the city is actively supporting that.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Hanson Romero?
So just a couple of things that have happened with Stop Waste. Actually, there was a household hazard waste one-day drop-off event here in Albany. However, it filled up really fast, is what I understand. Residents still have a couple of options of disposing their hazardous waste. They can either attend the one-day event in Oakland on Sunday 6:30, or drop off their waste at Oakland, Livermore, Fremont, or Hayward facilities, where appointments are not necessary. You visit the website to learn more. They're also doing some really cool programming with food waste prevention cooking demos. So you can go on there, onto the website, and learn about the series of food waste prevention cooking demonstrations at farmers' markets in Berkeley and a few other places. They're also doing some outreach. There's an informational session on law banning decorative lawn irrigation. So for more information, you can go on there. Promoting used oil recycling in communities. They've also got some project updates, Food For Thought, Innovative Approaches to Reducing Food Waste. So they're still doing a number of projects with education, more outreach. I've heard some Amazon ads even, you know, different stuff that they're continuing to do great work about, just educating more people and getting more information out and connecting services. They're also, let's see, there's a 2024 Upstream Grants Program this year that they received 125 grant applications requesting over $2.5 million in awards, marking the largest number of applicants and total funding requests to date. The program had a total budget of $1.1 million for grant awards, which in the end, we awarded funding to 59 grant applicants for a total of $1,087,000 for upstream circular solutions to waste prevention. And we'll be announcing the awardees on the website soon. And then there was also the Stop Waste Awards announced, let's see, sorry, trying to read all this. This is for the Stop Waste Environmental Leadership Awards. Vest of Food Service in Hayward for their Chefs to End Hunger Food Recovery Program. Sparkle Reusables in Oakland and Spectrum Community Services in Hayward for their reusable foodware partnership. So we're gonna continue working on some, some stuff here with the city. We've got some meetings that we're gonna be meeting with staff and get that, you know, more education going in our community as well, so, for, to help out our restaurants and food providers. Thanks.
Thank you so much for the update. Councilmember Jordan?
Thank you. So the Alameda County Transportation Commission obviously has met, but I think maybe the more interesting matter is the, the-
interesting matter is the, the uh, yeah, the ad hoc committee, informal committee, um, regrouping of commissioners that convened to meet with MTC regarding its pavement management software. Um, there was enough interest and ideas, uh, problems identified there that the MTC staff offered to meet with me to show me um, more about how the software worked. That happened a few weeks ago, a few weeks ago. Um, and I think some progress in communication was made in terms of pushing the case that it's not multi-modal, it doesn't consider where trucks and buses go, um, or where bike routes are, and uh, it's a ten-year quest, uh, it's a big agency, so there's a lot of inertia there, but um, step by step, uh, there was not enough commissioners interested that I think I'm going to see if um, I can put a formal item to create an ad hoc committee of the body or at the next uh, regular meeting.
Thank you for that update. Um, so I can provide some updates. Alameda County Mayor's Conference, I think the major thing that came out of there was, uh, we formally adopted amendments uh, that now allow um for the three cities that have rotating mayors, that uh, members who are serving on a committee, uh, through the Alameda County Mayor's Conference, uh, who are no longer mayor can cer- continue to serve, um, and have the same priority as a mayor of a, um, another community within Alameda County. So that most specifically addresses a concern that Councilmember Tiedemann will have when it comes up time where he may wish to be reappointed. And as such, uh, and so that was good. That gave clarity to the entire organization that, you know, uh, that uh, didn't put the three communities, ourselves included, kind of at a disadvantage for those that had um, long, long-term mayors or, or directly elected mayors. Uh, League California Cities, um, let's see. Uh, I don't think, we had Rob Bonta come present to us. Uh, he talked a little bit about enforcement. He talked about enforcement of all kinds of laws. Um, but there's nothing, I don't think, really pressing to report back from the league. Uh, you maybe have received some emails. They are constantly sending out updates about bills that are passing. Um, and I will um, likely be coming back to the council, potentially with some letters that we might consider sending on to the state, uh, really just saying, hey, um, we'd really like our funding. Huh huh huh. And uh, Police and Fire Pension Fund had their quarterly meeting in which we had an update, um, and um, uh, disbursements were made, so no real big updates there.
Mayor?
Yes?
I forgot one.
Go ahead.
Uh, and thank you for the update on the Mayor's Conference. It's very relevant, and I'm always concerned about it. Um, but Vice Mayor Lopez reminded me we should update about fun stuff, not just meetings. Uh, so I'll update that I was able to be on a panel at the Urban Land Institute's Housing the Bay Conference last month, where I was on a panel with Jonathan Fern from Signature Development Group and David Chu, who's the city attorney for San Francisco, about local and regional partnerships for housing, um, and share some of Albany's perspective.
I guess that reminds me that I have some updates. Uh, I think I've mentioned this before, but Cal Berkeley ran three studios on the Golden Gate Field Site uh, in a true to planning course, uh, which I was unable to attend their presentations, but I'm hoping to follow up and, and hear and see what they did. I understand uh, Director Bond was able to attend that portion of the meeting. I attended the afternoon session, which was a combination of the um, urban planning students and the real estate program, and so those two programs uh, formed four teams, and each team presented ideas for the waterfront. Uh, I would say that uh, they kind of, in many ways, took on some of the things that Voices Division talked about. Uh, given that it was a real estate program, they did not explore a se- a scenario that was, uh, let's say, over uh, sorry, they had a minimum program of three million square feet of something. So, this is, this is not a, this was not a uh, a process in which uh, the vast majority of the site was seen as park. That being said, the, every project had over seventy percent publicly accessible open space, so some of it was intended to be truly park space. Some of it was intended to be natural space, some of it was intended to be publicly accessible space that might be in private courtyards or other things, but uh, still, even accommodating anywhere from three million to, I believe the highest was over six million square feet. They were able to accommodate that much land, so that much of the site was left, uh, potentially for open space. Uh, and so that was one update. Uh, the other one, as we talked about earlier, was I attended Albany High School, um, and um, attended the um, the TuFEE presentation, so, and had a conversation with the students there, which led to the agenda item tonight. Uh, with that, um, we will move on. Do we do public, I, I always ask this, but do we do public comment on, on these updates? Any public comment? You almost never get any public comment on this one. Um, moving on to item thirteen, future agenda items, uh, looking for public comment. Not seeing any public comment. Any future agenda items that council members would like to ask for?
Um, yeah, a couple. One is to restore Albany's um natural gas preference reach code, since the ban. So Albany currently has a new build natural gas ban, which the court has found unenforceable. Um, and so we could revert to ordinance that Albany previously had, which was approved by the California Energy Commission. Um, and so, uh, it's not the subject of a court decision. Um, and I also am interested in bringing an item regarding the city watering new street trees. Um, because I'm concerned particularly with uh, temperatures going up, that too many of them are dying or will die in the coming, coming fall.
Not seeing any other items being asked for. Um, we'll move on to item fourteen, announcements of city meetings and events. Uh, if you pull up tonight's agenda, you can see uh, city meetings and events coming up. I would really highlight that pickleball one. I hope to be in attendance at that one. I have not RSVP'd yet, but I hope to be there. Um, as a person who's played pickleball once only, I am looking forward to having more courts accessible to me. Uh, let's see, and with that, we'll adjourn. Uh, thank you to all who took part uh, in today's meeting. If you or a loved one has experienced thoughts of suicide, a mental health, or substance use crisis, or any other kind of emotional distress, call or text nine eight eight to speak to a trained crisis specialist. And with that, I'll adjourn tonight's meeting. Thank you, everyone.